To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to our November 6th meeting. Please note Ms. Scott's absent this evening. Okay, so the first thing on our agenda is items from council. We do have a number of items. I know there's... Mr. De La Garza, you have one that's not listed. Why don't you start us off?
Yeah, I just wanted to counsel to see the presentation I made to John Quinones with ABC News. We gave him the key to the city, and I thought it was pretty cool. But I wanted y'all to at least see the event.
Great, great.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us for Community Crossroads. I'm James Munoz. Today, we have a special guest. He is the face of Doing the Right Thing, ABC's John Quinones, host of What Would You Do Is Here. Also have City Councilman Rafael De La Garza from the city of Victoria.
Councilman, how are you? Good to meet you.
Good to see you. So very glad that you came to Victoria. We really appreciate you, and you're a true inspiration to our young people. And we want you to continue that. And as a token of our appreciation, and thanks for coming to Victoria, this is the key.
To the city.
From the city of Victoria.
Oh, my God, look at this. I can get in anywhere now, right?
Anywhere, anywhere.
It could open 24 hours? Thank you, well, I'll unlock it.
24/7. Thank you so very much.
What an honor.
Glad to meet you.
Thank you so much again. Wow, I'm making out like a bandit here.
You can stay right here. Isn't that nice?
Yes, it's gorgeous.
All right, stay with us. We'll be right back with John Quinones.
Good job. Thank you. I wasn't able to do it, and I think you represented us so well. So thank you for that. I don't even have one of those keys, you know that. That's great, that's great. Thank you. Okay, we'll continue under items from council. We can just go in order municipal court. We have a couple of proclamations that we'll read those and make those presentations. The first one is Municipal Court Week.
This is a proclamation signed by the mayor, and it reads in part, "Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Victoria; whereas more people come in contact with the municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined; and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal courts; and whereas the city of Victoria is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret the laws that governs and the judges and court personnel should apply with, apply the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary; now therefore I, Paul Palosic, Mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of November 5th through November 9th, 2018, as Municipal Court Week, in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the municipal court of the city of Victoria." And it is signed today by Mayor Paul Palosic.
Oh, he's part of Municipal Court, too.
Exhale.
The second proclamation is in honor of GIS Day, and it also signed by the mayor, and it reads in part, "Whereas the science of geographic information systems connects people, regions, and systems; and whereas the city of Victoria is committed to expanding GIS to schools and general public in order to showcase real-world applications with GIS; and whereas Geography Awareness Week is November 2nd through 16th and promotes geographic literacy in the schools; now therefore I, Paul Palosic, Mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 14th, 2018, as GIS Day, and urge all citizens to participate in GIS Day activities."
So I have a few comments in place of Adrienne, and who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. But the Development Services GIS Division will hold its 16th Annual GIS Day on November 15th and 16th. And they will celebrate it this year by visiting two schools, Roland Elementary on the 15th and Mission Valley Elementary on the 16th. The team will give lessons to the 5th grade classes, which is approximately 125 students. And the students will learn about geography and GIS through PowerPoint presentation, a demonstration of the GIS website, and Google Earth. And then they will head outside to do a geocaching project. At the end of the lesson, the students will be presented with a GIS Day certificate of participation, and then also receive a GIS Day goodie bag, which contains map pencils and maps and things. And we'd like to acknowledge and thank the CBB and the Environmental Services Department for helping provide us with some of those goodie bag items. And if anybody has any GIS Day 2018 questions, they can call the GIS Division at 485-3360. Want a picture?
Okay, thank you. Both of those, you know, the municipal court does so much work. And a lot of times, council probably agree with me that we're not always privy to it, but they process lots of information. And GIS itself is pretty amazing, too. You kind of have to wonder why it's so important, but it allows us to leverage technology. If you haven't ever really used our system or looked at it, you should. It's amazing, so. Good job to both those groups. Okay. Dr. Young, you want to?
Yeah, I can, I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. I did want to bring up the topic of single-sided garbage slash possible recycling pickup. As I, one day, took my trash out, and one neighbor across the street, and I thought, well, I just moved it over there. Thought I'd make it easier for the trash truck, but I know that that's not how that works with the routes. However, seeing as I did that, I went, well, why can't this be done on a citywide basis? I started to kind of look and do my own research, found out there's only, I think, two cities in the country right now that are doing it, which seemed to be a little bit odd. Because as I thought about it, and the reason why I bring it forward is, is we can talk about increased efficiency, which is decreased man-hours, decreased fuel and mileage. We can talk about decreased wear, tear, and maintenance on the trucks, which are expensive. We can talk about decreased wear and tear on the roads, which I think was really the onus behind me even bringing this up. And that's where we kind of started with this. And we started this, I don't know, well over a year ago.
Yeah, before the hurricane.
And we kind of put this on the back burner at the time. But doing a little bit more research and talking with Daryl, we've kind of come up with some ideas. Well, we'll say, but again, when talking with him, I said, well, certainly that's up to us seven to come up with something. But I'm just looking to improve efficiency for our city to save the taxpayers money. Everything gets more expensive. Very rarely do we get a chance to become more efficient. And I think this is an opportunity. Doesn't come without some challenges, I understand. Daryl, do you want to give us a little bit more information?
I will.
And how this would work if it does?
Dr. Young and I have had a couple of chances to talk about this. And it, the two cities he's talking about are Olympia, Washington. They've got, and I'll take these one at a time, they've got about 14,000 homes. Currently, they're servicing about 3,000 have been converted. And they're kind of doing it on a... They're taking, like, main thoroughfares first, then they're taking, like, different loops and different things. If you kind of go out and look, I took the time to contact them and talk to them about their pickup. Both cities kind of did the same thing. The, right now, they've got about 3,000. They've listed on their website a couple more streets that will be coming in in the next couple of months. And so there are things that you have to look at as you're doing this. Not every street qualifies to be done. You know, you want driveways to match up, you've got to look for wires, you've got to look for parked cars on the streets. You know, how much room do you allow in between containers, set-out days, school zones, those types of things. The other city is Southport, Florida. They have about 31,000, so about 10,000 more customers than we have. About 2/3 of their city has been converted. And so Olympia, Washington is an every-other-week pickup for garbage, every-other-week for recycling. So they use the same trucks to pick up the same thing, just on a different week. In Florida, it is a every-week pickup, and currently, it's garbage only. We have, we've gone around, we've looked at some areas of town. We believe there's some areas that'll work in. You're not looking at being able to do, I would say, less than 50% of the city that we've looked at. The efficiencies that they've seen from these are exactly what Dr. Young said. I mean, they're looking at, you know, your miles driven, your consumption of fuel, repairs on the trucks, and then also the collection time is reduced. It's not cut in half. They only found a 20% reduction in actual time in Olympia, Washington, on the streets that they have done so far. When talking with both these people, they both did six-month pilot programs, they both did surveys. One used Survey Monkey, the other used direct mail. They let the surveys drive how, when, and where they did the programs. And with that, I can answer any questions. I think I covered everything.
We have some one-way roads, too, or dead end.
Yes, one-way, one-way streets are perfect for this. And we have some in town that it would work on. We have some in town it'd be a little more difficult on, just because they're very narrow. Lots of parking on the side of the road. When you get into certain areas of town with, have the really narrow dead ends. And there's just, lot sizes don't lend on all of them to us being able to put multiple carts on one side of the road.
Are we talking voluntary, or what?
No, I think that voluntary kind of reduces the efficiency. Because if you're voluntary and there's one on the other side, then they've got to make that whole pass back around. I don't think that that solves, achieves the goal that we're looking for.
We would have to pick neighborhoods, the whole neighborhood, it would have to participate. It would be the same as what we do with everything else. Going into one neighborhood, if everybody doesn't put their stuff on the same side, I still got to go down the road twice. You're not gaining anything.
No, my neighborhood's perfect. I'm looking at Jeff because he lives down the street.
Except for I live on a cul-de-sac, so...
I would, they would all go to one side, we would be able to just go and pick up one side. We'd still have to turn around in the cul-de-sac, unfortunately.
And drive back out.
And drive back out.
Same number of stops, whether on one side or two sides with a cul-de-sac.
Same number of stops, yes, sir. But when you start talking about, we have some neighborhoods that this would work in. We have some that there's just no way it's going to work.
When we automated the system, I mean, we had, that was the most exhaustive discussions we've ever, I can recall. I don't know who was here then, Tom, you were, I know. And that came up, it was brought up, because I remember it. Even about adding a section, "This is just me talking," to the building code requiring that a spot be designated where the trash can goes on new developments. A little marker, a little concrete pad, I don't know. But yeah, I think it's interesting. 20% is 20%.
20% is 20%.
Well, that was 20% of time.
Yeah.
That is, you know, yeah.
Okay, I mean, translates into savings and...
Well, and that's what I was trying to quantify, is what would be the actual monetary savings? And I think that was difficult to come up with.
It would be until I know the exact amount of miles, the exact amount of time, the exact... I don't question their number. They say they reduce their miles driven in Olympia, Washington. It's the only one I could get that was willing to share their numbers, by 40% on the miles driven. That directs, goes back to maintenance costs, goes back to fuel, wear and tear, the whole nine yards. Until we actually do it and pick our neighborhoods, it's hard to say. Because how, you know, how many homes are we going to be able to do this for? And then come back and say, this is how much, you know, once we're doing it, I can, I mean, it's easy for me to tell you what we're doing because we track everything, miles, engine hours, the whole nine yards. But until you actually do it, all I can give you is what they're saving with their numbers.
And there's probably no true way to quantify wear and tear on the road. I mean, those have got to be the heaviest trucks with turning on those roads.
You, it is, they're about the same as a school bus. The difference is, we stop a lot more often than a school bus does. And the weight shift can be more than what a school bus would have. The one, the one thing that's hard to say with the roads is then, and I know we didn't talk about this because I just thought about it, but after a certain amount of time, do we change to the other side of the road? Because now we're only on that one side of the road, is it going to wear unevenly? And that I don't know.
And I think when Dr. Young spoke to us about that, you know, delivering the concept to council tonight was to get the concept out there. And if it's something that the majority of council wishes, then what we would, and we don't, I don't think we expect that tonight. It's more of a think about it. And if it's something that council wishes us to pursue, we can go back and bring those neighborhoods back that we think it would work in. Again, it would be, it would, we would probably do a survey to see if everybody, 100% of the residents are willing to participate before we would embark on it.
Oh, you'll never, we'll never get that.
Well, but you...
You don't tell people what to...
But you can't, like Daryl said, and Dr. Young said, you're, everybody's got to participate if we're going to do it, or it's not worth doing it, so...
Northcrest would be, you know, those long, those streets are a mile long. You grew up over there.
It's all ditches.
The problem with, the problem with Northcrest, though, is a lot of the driveways don't always line up. So you may have to go out and then go down the road to put your cart next to your neighbor's cart. It is one that we've looked at, but we have some, there are some newer subdivisions that are just, I mean, and there's no overhead wires. I mean, there's, there are places in town that instantaneously you could make this work if you wanted to.
Why do the driveways have to line up?
Just because if, it makes it easier if we've got the carts away from mailboxes that aren't necessarily near the driveway, and Northcrest are out by their front door. And so if driveways don't line up, we're putting carts out and walking. So you got, go out into your driveway and go down towards the other carts to try and get them in an area where we're not... I'd like to have them where we're picking up between here and the dais, rather than having to stop every 45 or 50 feet. Because if they're all wired together, we can do them a whole lot quicker. It comes down to productivity.
And we can put the concept back on in a few weeks and let, let you guys think about it.
Theoretical, because I'm, you know the neighborhoods better where the driveways will line up, but...
Doesn't have to be everywhere. I mean, you can do it where it works if people will do it.
Downtown where I live, it's on a grid system, so that was the initial idea. And then you start looking, and we talked in a few other neighborhoods that line up on grid systems. But the overhead lines, I guess, are an issue.
Overhead lines, trees, street parking, sometimes street width. If we've got a wide street and there's street parking, it may not be a problem. If we have a narrow street and there's street parking, it could be a problem. And then lot length, you know, the lot width makes a difference. Because we still need the five feet in between the carts.
I'd like to see more, yeah.
Yeah.
Keep looking at it and bringing some ideas back. The one I always wanted was, I want to be able to weigh the garbage cans and charge by the pound. Because then recycling would really go up.
Now you can't recycle glass.
Yeah, that's true. But you know, I know people in this town, they'd be putting that trash can out once every three months, so anyway.
We'll put some final touches and bring back something in.
Thanks, Daryl. Holding a trash can across the street, but...
Yeah. Always looking to improve. I think it's a great idea to just keep looking. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Daryl.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Bocknight, you're up.
We had talked a while back about sidewalks and what triggered it. If you had a large piece of property and you wanted to do an addition to it. And I think that we have a couple of options before us.
Yes, I think I've also got a PowerPoint for it. That basically just puts the options on the screen for everybody. The first option would just be to exempt out sidewalk construction for any time that the expansion is less than 25% of the gross floor area of the existing buildings. When we are researching different cities' regulations, there's not really this sort of exemption. Most of the time, sidewalks are required at the plating stage. And so I took the 25% from our existing regulations, which triggers plating. Whenever you are expanding an unplatted parcel, building on unplatted parcel, more than 25%, that triggers plating, and so that's where that 25% came from. The other option to consider would be to expand the ability for the director to offer a waiver at any time. It's less than 25%, even if it's curb and gutter. Currently, waivers are only authorized on the open ditch section, or if it's residential. So if any commercial on a curb and gutter street is not eligible for the sidewalk agreement and covenant. So we could add in that any time the expansion is less than 25%, I would be able to offer that waiver. And sort of going along with that option would be actually adding in an appeals process for denied sidewalk waivers that come. If the staff, if the director of development services were to deny that waiver, then appeal could come directly to council. Some considerations for the sidewalk agreement and covenants are the street classifications. So if we have a priority of wanting sidewalks on major thoroughfares, that could come into play. Then, of course, the different sidewalks in the area. The actual code for the sidewalk agreement states that if there's continuous sidewalks in that block face, then an agreement is not eligible, you actually have to fill in that gap. Infill opportunities in the area, if there are zero sidewalks in the area, but there's also zero vacant lots, it makes a lot less sense to require a sidewalk. The right-of-way width, is there room? And then the location of schools and other public facilities. Then there's the other section on large-scale developments, and how we want those, if we want incremental compliance. It's important to remember that additions to structures over 5,000 square feet do require full engineered drawings. So they're pretty substantial projects, even if they're a much smaller percentage of a much larger development. So those are some considerations.
And again, you're seeing this for the first time tonight. Mr. Bocknight requested it, so it's a, for y'all to take, look at, and we'll put it back on, you know, another agenda for consideration.
And I gave you the exact language for the option A and B for the sidewalk waiver-appeal process. We would need to do a little bit more research of where that would fit in. I didn't have time to talk to Thomas in depth about how that would actually work in the ordinance, although we can come up with something.
Thank you. I prefer, just so y'all know, option A, because it takes it out of anybody's hands, cut and dry.
That's the 25%?
Yep. And that way, it's not a bureaucratic process, it's just plain in there.
Okay, so you're going to bring something back?
If council, if the majority of council wishes to go with option A, we'll bring back an ordinance revision. If council wishes to think about it and look at what's in front of them, then we'll put it back on for a discussion item. Like I said, you're seeing it for the first time tonight.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of some specific examples. I know, you probably know some, but yeah. I don't have any fundamental problem with it. I understand what you're trying to do.
We can just bring back an ordinance then on the first meeting in December.
Okay.
For option A. I'm not hearing any, okay, sounds good.
I'm still trying to make sure we're thinking this all the way through.
Yep.
Both sides of it. So you drive down the street, and we've got a place where there's no sidewalk, and things of that nature. Want to make sure we've got everything covered, because that has a problem now.
Well, I don't think it's even-handed right now, so if you do put a small addition, well, relative small addition on, as opposed to if you get a total facelift or total renovation of your facility, you wouldn't be required to. You didn't change anything. So you take, like, Gadsenhoffer that did a total facelift and everything a few years ago, that didn't trigger any need for sidewalks in front of it. Sure makes it look better and everything else. The buildings look great, but no sidewalks were required because of it. And then you put that little bump onto Harbor Freight, and it requires sidewalks all the way down to Barrow and Crestwood. From a developer's standpoint, it doesn't, didn't quite make sense. And I understand the need for infilling the sidewalks as well, but...
And I'm trying to make sure we're doing it as best we can. I'd like to make sure we think it through and don't do something that we see, darn, we should have thought of that.
Yep.
It kind of, you know, the mood of sidewalks comes and goes with the public. There's fatality somewhere, and somebody gets all upset, and, you know, we need sidewalks, and it's difficult. And then every situation is so different.
Yep.
Trying to apply, like, the example, you know, I mean, this is a, I agree, a reasonable way to look at it. So let's see, let's put it, bring it back and have another discussion.
Think about it, and we have a good discussion.
Yeah. Okay, good.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, Julie.
Julie, on that number two in option A in the residential subdivision, the property owner shall install sidewalks on vacant lots when three years' time has elapsed following the date that 90% of the lot in the subdivisions have been built upon. So if you buy a lot in a subdivision, you have three years to put the sidewalk in? Is that what that says?
If the director of public works gives written notice. So I'm not sure that we have been actively doing that.
And that's only in a subdivision? That's not, you know, any worse, you know, just like...
It'd be within the boundaries of the subdivision. I think there's a very good example of a gap based off of vacant lot in the Ben Shmar Country Club Villa area. That would, I think, be a good example of where you have a vacant lot where the rest of the neighborhood is substantially built out, and there's a sidewalk gap. I'm sure we can come up with some others.
Yeah, I know, like, in my neighborhood, it, what is it, 40 years old? There's a couple of lots, there's no sidewalk. So that's what you're talking about.
They don't necessarily have to be built on, they just have to put it in there before they have three years...
Per continuity, yeah.
Okay.
I thought, I thought it was the developer had to do it after a certain amount of time. I need to go read this again.
This is the property owner.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is the property owner.
But we're talking about if they're sold. We can get into it later, I don't...
Yeah, and that's currently in the ordinance.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. Okay, y'all ready to move on? Riverside Golf Course, that's Mr. Bocknight.
So I just ask Mrs. Garrett if she could present the third quarter financials for the golf course. I just want to make sure we're keeping on track. I know it's a big leap for us to fund the balance, the fund balance for them, working capital, and taking it over. And I just want to make sure we're on track to keep making our numbers, and that it's not costing taxpayers any additional dollars. It's self-sustaining.
I can give you a brief overview, real quick. Can you hand that up for me, sir? Actually, what he's handing out right now is actually the income statement as of 9:30, 2018, including some accruals after that date.
Which is, you said third quarter, Jeff, that's the fiscal year.
I'm giving you the whole fiscal year, so it's like, I'm giving you the whole...
Thank you.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Bocknight? It's what we're going to end up as, technically. So what you're having, I'll wait a few minutes.
And this is the same document we gave them last week.
Oh, you did hand it out?
Yes, we did. It was in their read file, so it's the same document.
Same one. I'm just going to go over some highlights real quick. First of all, it's a modified cash basis, meaning that it's cash basis plus some minor accrual account receivables, meaning that I got some, and your past players for the next three months included. I got accrual payables in there, too. I do have the capital expenditures usually on a full-blown accrual basis. If you don't have those, you got depreciation, okay? Just FYI, it's on audit, it's pretty close. Bottom line, you can show, I see a net income, I'll round each number if it's okay with y'all, it's $13,000. You're going to end up with a, ending working capital by $328,000 as an increase, because, of course, we got $140,000 transfer in. I don't consider it as revenue, regular revenue, just regular transfer in, okay? It does not include depreciation expense when you go to the audit statement eventually, it's going to be presented on the website, it's going to have about $8,100 in there. The reason I exclude it here, because I want to show council from a working capital balance standpoint where you stand from dollar-wise. Does that make sense to y'all? Does that make sense to y'all? So, and again, that first column is only nine months of operation. Remember, we started January through September. On the far-hand right, which is kind of baby blue column, that's next year's budget, that's a full 12 months. Just want to give you some correlation there, let you look at that. As you can tell, our round plays are down compared to what I did on the business plan. The only reason we came out pretty good is because we managed our costs, bottom line. That's it. Another note, if, as you recall, we did, went through the whole analysis of do we want to profit, have a third-party managers and everything else, and the lowest bid was around $60,000. So technically, if we had somebody else managing, we have another $60,000 on top of this. So for the first nine months, I believe we were in the black. We still got 12 months to go next year, a full-blown year. Thank Parks Department, and our golf pro's been done a heck of a job out there managing that course. We've been pretty lucky so far, and we came out pretty good from the hurricane.
Gilbert, the second column from the left, fiscal year 1718, business plan, is that 12 months?
That's eight months compared, that's nine months compared to the actual...
We're looking at nine and nine.
Yeah, that's the one I presented to y'all when we first started the operation.
Well, you just glossed over, but I gotta say this, what jumped out to me here, the total revenues, yeah, we missed that a bit, but what a wonderful job you did of managing expenses when you get down to your ending working capital. You did a good job. Y'all, y'all are keeping an eye on things, then, as any business owner should, when they're not meeting revenue, you gotta go back off somewhere.
Covenant Air folks do a good job of that.
Appreciate that. I, forgive me, Mr. Bultnight, I just, but when I saw this, I thought, well, that's what I see, so...
Another thing to look at this, if you forget the transfer, forget the working capital, if you had a net income of $13,000, I'm showing you I had a capital expenditure cash basis of $10,000, so you're still positive from a cash basis standpoint. As you recall, there's $7,000 in there, that's the range that was done after the fact, since we have the, as you recall, we collect a dollar on play, well, that's how we funding that technically, for the capital improvement fund. So I expect the numbers to be pretty close as when the final audits finalize, so I didn't show you the full-blown, regular budget deal, or cash, I figured you want to see something down, bottom line, more from a business perspective, so I'm showing you this, but I'm happy, I got the other one, too.
No, that's fine. I just heard rounds were down, then, from what we had proposed, and I'm just curious on how we ended up for our nine months, then. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Elise? I think you have some jurors.
Well, John's prepared to talk about it, too. Ms. Elise.
Sorry.
The last meeting that we had for the long-term recovery group, Kim Pickens said that our time for extending the waivers for the bulky pickup and the building permits for the long-term recovery group was gonna end December the 19th of this year, and she wanted to ask for an extension of another year while they're still working with the Harvey people. So I told her I'd bring it up to council, and so we could possibly do that in the next couple of weeks.
And I know, as John explained, we believe there's another wave of volunteers coming in soon to help with those additional homes that still need assistance.
We want to be able to...
That date is accurate, and we do have time to get an ordinance through both second, first and second readings before that deadline expires. It's for the, for both of those fee waivers. We've done about 13 building permit fee waivers, and I think around 15 collections of bulky waste so far. We don't expect it to be a huge amount.
Appreciate it.
So the material amount, it's not material in terms of the amount of the fees?
It's not, I don't know how much those fees would have been. It's only, like I said, there were 13 building, roofing permits, re-roofing permits for residential in about 15 locations where we picked up, again, mostly roofing materials.
And just to be clear, we're talking about that knuckle-bloom truck that picks all that stuff piled up in the front.
Correct.
Of course, that fee shows up on your bill, that's the fee we're talking about waiving for those projects.
Correct. And again, it's only for those addresses that are referred to, those city departments by the long-term recovery group.
Okay, so they decide which ones?
That's correct.
Yeah, bring it back.
We just need the consensus to bring back an ordinance to amend that, so thank you. We'll bring that back.
Good, good idea. Thank you, Ms. Elise.
Thank you, guys.
Are we missing, Jeff, you had...
I have three items, and I think Mrs. Garrett shares one of them with me, with Chapter 211 and 212, and a explanation of, better explanation of what we talked about last week, had some confusion.
Oh, yes, thank you for that, and I know Paul and I talked about that. I think there was some confusion, and then Mr. McCoy mentioned it this morning, too, that we're not planning on bringing back an ordinance to adopt zoning on the second meeting in November. We're just needing direction from council on how to structure the Unified Development Code going forward, so staff knows whether it's a combination of 211, Chapter 211 and 212, or if it's purely the 212 where you'll have to submit the plats. So thank you for that. So that's, that's just, we're coming back, it'll be under an item from city manager to just see where council's desire is on whether the 211. So that's, thank you for that, yeah. Seems to be some confusion, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I'd encourage everybody to read 211. There are some definite sections in there that I would not want the city to pursue, and my indication from staff is that's not what their intent is, to pursue those that have to do specifically with what we all think of as zoning. And, you know, I'd like our ordinance to reflect that we don't want those.
The map, it's the map, it's...
Not just the map, there's some sections in there.
Sure, but I think, I'm sorry, I think the citizens think about the maps, adopting the maps, restriction on where you can put a commercial or residential.
But zoning boards and all that, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there.
And then, just as a reminder to council, too, once we get the guidance on what structure to go forth on building the Unified Development Code, it'll probably be a year, year and a half, maybe as long as two years, before council gets a document back to approve. This is not, this is a very long-term project. We're doing it in-house and not hiring a consultant to do it, so it's gonna take a little bit longer. But you've got a committee, which Mr. Bultnight's a part of, that will look at, will work with the Development Services Director, and then it'll go to the Planning Commission for them to look at that, and then it'll come to city council for final approval, so...
And we'll be looking for input from developers and architects and owners to make sure that it's gonna meet the needs of everybody.
That's the lofty goal of it, is to make it easier. It's just too confusing now, and that'd be a proper goal to go for.
As you've already said, but to be clear as mud, we are not adopting zoning. Would you agree with that?
I agree.
Okay. I don't know what the future holds, I don't, but I'm just saying, this council, I think, is not interested in that right now, so, okay.
I am not, I'm not interested in that. Don't tell me what to do with my land.
I tend to agree, and that's the way Victoria works, and it's the will of the folks, you bet.
So we'll have that back on November 20th, so I know a lot of you are reading the chapters, asking good questions, so please continue to do that over the next few weeks.
Okay. I have a question on Crestwood. Do we have an idea of when that design's gonna be released? Get out for bid?
I anticipate taking that to bid in January.
Okay. And I don't know on that, how, if there's any way to fix in front of Shields on Crestwood. I know it's gonna get rebuilt, but...
It's horrible.
That is turning into the worst section.
Okay, we can look into it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Reese, I don't even have a suggestion for that one.
We didn't have a, we didn't have, it wasn't the plan to go through that intersection, but we'll take a look at it, see what we can do.
Okay.
On a scale of one to 10, we probably need an 11 or 12 for that section.
Yeah, it is, it's bad. It's been that way a while.
I know, it's patched and patched.
Have y'all been getting any calls? You probably use it, I know.
I use it.
But, yeah. It's sad to think that the folks over there are probably used to it, that's sad, but, you know, I remember when Red River, parts of Red River was like that. We're getting there, so we're making progress.
And then may I pull D5, please? Thank you, Mr. Reese.
Okay, anything else?
I'm out of breath.
It's the longest item from council we've had a while. I know we got one gentleman, one addresses. Is there anything else under items from council before we move on? Christmas parade coming up, December 1st, Saturday, and then the Friday. We already mentioned that, didn't we?
Well, not here, but November 30th, it's be the Christmas in the Square, and then the next day, December 1st, is the light parade.
Weather's gonna be perfect.
Clear weather. Clear weather.
Okay. We'll mention it again at the next meeting, want everybody to come to that. Okay, so we'll move into citizens' communication now, anyone that wants to come forward, and just give us your name for the record, and keep your comments to five minutes.
Mayor, distinguished members of the city council, my name is Will Martin, and I stand before you today representing the American Legion and all its members of Victoria County. First of all, I want to apologize to our mayor, the Honorable Paul Poloschek, for being a thorn in your backside, sir, for the past month. And I want to thank the city council and all those that worked so hard on hearing our plea for action on the illegal game room situation and acting on it in such a timely fashion. The citizens of Victoria have a lot to be proud of, and one thing that stands above all is their city council. The American Legion and the veterans of Victoria County, thank you and applaud you for the passage of the ordinance that will hopefully get rid of these illegal game rooms in Victoria. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. But I don't, I know we talked a minute before the meeting, and you're never be a thorn in my side, you know that. So I just want to thank the police chief and city attorney and city manager for working real hard on all that.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, citizens' communication's still open for anyone else. Okay, seeing no one wanting to take us up on that, we'll move into items with public hearing. We have one item.
Sure. Item C1 is an ordinance adding Section 24-74 of Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code of Ordinances to allow for an annual amnesty period to forgive library fines and fees accrued on overdue materials, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
So we'll open the public hearing on C1. If anyone would like to speak to this item only, now would be the time. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion and second, is there a discussion of this?
I have a question.
Questions, ma'am?
Is Dana gonna come up here? Okay, in the amnesty program, how would you handle somebody that lost a book but still owes on it? Would they pay the fine and the book, or just the book, the value of the book?
During the amnesty, we would forgive fines.
Right.
And then they would still have to pay for that lost item.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, that people are aware that they still have to come up and pay for the item if they've lost it, but if they haven't, they can come and turn it in, and they don't have to pay a fine.
As long as those items have not been turned over to municipal court, which would have been before March of 2017.
Okay. That's just...
I got a couple of questions. Do we ask for any debit or credit card for any of the people eligible to check out materials?
Ask for their information before they check out, or to pay for those materials?
So that they have, we have some way of recouping, so we're not worried about this in the future?
We do not collect any financial information from them when they apply for a library card, so we do not have any debit, credit information on them.
Is there any way that we could?
I would have to look into that and see if that is something that libraries do. I have not heard of that process.
I'm not worried about other libraries?
I'm sorry?
I'm not worried about what other libraries do?
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if it's something we can do?
Well, Mr. Bultnight, we'll look into it.
Okay, that'd be great.
That's, yeah, we'll look into it.
Okay, and also...
So let me clarify, though, so what you would like is when they come in to get a library card, they have to put on file with us a copy of their debit or credit card, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it. We'll look into it.
Almost like a blockbuster.
Do what?
Almost like a blockbuster.
Uh-huh. Red box. Anything else that you checked something out?
We'll look into it.
And then also, do we ID for entry to make sure that they're residents?
At the door, no, we do not.
Is that something we can do, or is that not possible since it's a public building?
Well, you ID when they get a card, I mean...
But you're talking about if somebody, say, a resident that's visiting a town that may be, you know, a guest of somebody that lives in town or traveling through at a hotel, that they would have to be a resident of the Victoria County before they could come into the library?
I'm more worried about the homeless population that hangs out there in the afternoons, and is a worry to parents, that I've gotten comments on.
Okay. We don't forbid people to come into the library, but what Dana and her staff do, if there's a problem with an individual, whether they're homeless or not, if they're creating a problem within the library, they speak to them, and if we have had times where we've had to call the police department, we've also had to issue criminal trespass ordinance against somebody for being in the library, so they work closely. So if there's a patron in there that's having a problem, I would encourage them to let either Dana or the person at the information desk know.
Okay.
So, but they do a really good job of watching for issues.
Okay. All right.
So do you want us to continue looking at...
I would like to see if it's possible to ID.
Okay, so...
But definitely on the debit and credit card.
With the constraints around their Victoria County residents?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, do you, I would get off track a little. Can you issue a library card to a non, what are our rules there?
We can, and Dana can explain those a lot better than me.
Because if we have a neighboring community, smart towns, that will come in, yeah.
Yes, that is an agreement that we have with the Texas State Library, that we can issue cards to residents of the state of Texas. So often, if they are outside of our region, or outside of our county, we're asking for proof that they own property, and then we have restrictions on actually what they can use that card for. They don't get the full benefit that you do if you live in Victoria County. So there are restrictions to what material, like, what types of items, how many items or, like, electronic resources they can get access to through our website.
They can't rent 100 CDs and disappear?
No.
Maybe a couple?
There are limits on the number of items.
And, you know, people can come in, go read periodicals and not have to have a card, you know, they stay in the library, so, but we're also, you know, certified, have some certifications, too, that those type actions may affect. So, but, no, we'll look at, since I know your parameters of what you're looking for, that helps. Thank you.
But the amnesty is a tool in your toolbox, you think that will help compliance? Do you feel this is...
Yes, it would help us get those materials back into the building and available for others to use. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question. Have we ever done this before, and is it going to become an annual event?
We have not done it in 12 years, and before that, I am not aware, because I was not here, if it was done in the past. And it may or may not become an annual event. This ordinance would give us the option. It's not something that I would want to set up and have, like, every year at the same time. So you'd like to have that option to either have or not have it, and have it different times of year.
Okay. But if we vote on this, well, when we vote on this, will it set it up to allow to have one every year at her discretion, or...
Yes, ma'am. That's, the way it's written, it would be allowed for the library director to implement it on, up to an annual basis.
Okay. But it would end, like, at the end of this year? Or is it something that's gonna continue?
It's at her discretion, just when she would...
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are you planning on having one, if we pass it?
I hope to, very soon. I hope to, very soon.
And can we get a report out after that's done to see how many of the items were 19, was it 19,000? 1,900?
Yeah.
So we can get a report and see what's.
Yes, we plan to track that. Yes, we would plan to track how many items actually came back. And I can give you report number because we have past numbers. I can compare them to what we've done, what we have in the past, lost, and what we do receive back.
Okay.
That would be interesting. You've brought us data before, I know.
Yes.
Is the current number of late items staying fairly consistent? Or are you seeing a spike or a decrease or anything? I'm curious.
We saw a spike actually right there during Hurricane Harvey.
Which would be a little understandable, yeah.
Yeah, and so that was the biggest spike I saw. And I'm hoping that possibly some of those items are still out there. It's just that with all of the disruption in people's lives, that it's just something that was pushed to the back burner. So I'm hoping to retrieve hopefully some of those items because that does fall in that time period. That's really where we've seen it. Otherwise, it's been consistent.
Okay.
One more question. It's just that, you know, so when you receive this fees, are you planning to replace whatever was still out that's lost? So that way you still have the same library or are you just going to use that for? I'm just asking.
Those fees go back into the general fund, so she doesn't receive them directly in her budget, so.
So we should give her an increase in her budget next year.
That's always an option.
Just make sure you bring that up in the next budget time. We can sure do that.
Okay, Dana.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Yes, ma'am.
So, in this report she's gonna return to us, it will have the actual amount of fees that we waived. So we're gonna know how much.
If you want, yeah.
The actual amount, yes.
Yeah, I can do fees waived, fines waived, and number of items returned.
Yeah.
Definitely those.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
I'm surprised the, you said it's been pretty steady, the amount of materials.
Lots.
I would have figured that it would have decreased with the amount of electronic books and stuff of that nature.
Well, we still continue to get high circulation at our library. Yeah, the jury's still out on that, but we still have a lot of users who still use print, so.
Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. You want to just do the D1, 2, 3, 4, and 6?
Sure, there are five items remaining on the consent agenda tonight that will be approved with a single vote. They are first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting about Cover 16, 2018. Second, an ordinance amending Chapter 19 of the Victoria City Code relating to railroad roads to delete certain sections preempted by federal law, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. The third is an ordinance replacing Chapter 14 of the Victoria City Code to update requirements pertaining to occupational licenses, taxes, and regulations, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and enforcement, codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. Item D4 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 to adjust certain fees related to obtaining permits, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. And item D6 is a resolution approving the purchase of replacement parts to perform repairs and maintenance at the city's surface water treatment plant from Equova Water Technologies LLC in the amount of $54,216.30, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay.
Item D5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission for the operation of a transit system, authorizing the expenditure of city funds for the transit system in the amount of $209,000 and declaring an effective date.
Some move?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until the first meeting in December so that we can have someone from the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Transit Department answer some questions.
Can you second?
Yes.
Can I do? I never do it.
Yeah, sure, you can second that.
I second that. I agree. I never do that, I'm sorry, all these years.
If anybody has a Robert's Rules maven, we're gonna consider that a motion to postpone to a time definite rather than a motion to table. But that's, that's all right. And that requires a second, which we know.
Okay. So, yeah, there are some questions. And do you have a handout of some financial, some numbers on it?
Yes, I handed out a, I just put in percentages based on what was already in the D5 background information. It showed percentages, and I was just trying to get back to our averages from the years 2012 through 2018. Averages as a percentage of contribution total of 33% and an average of 8.65% for the total budget is typically what the city has done. But I think it's unfair without her here to answer any questions about why they decreased their contribution by 113,000 but not the city's contribution at all.
I very much want to hear that myself, so.
So we've got that on December 4th now.
Okay, I know we need to vote. I know, I'm thinking, I'm just.
Okay.
You know, it raises, and I'm gonna pontificate for a second. It raises something that I have been working on for a long time that annoys me greatly is we're looked at as a piggy bank for a lot of organizations. And I will be bringing a couple of things back. You know, the first one was, no disrespect to anyone, was the drainage district, which turned out well, ended well. But there are other situations where this group, and I don't like it, and I'm annoyed by, we share too great of a financial burden on a lot of things when then there are other taxable entities out there that could do more. So you'll see more in the future. This kind of reminds me of that, so. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Where's table? E1.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to initiate annexation proceedings, develop an annexation service plan, and to offer and enter into annexation development agreements with ag-exempt property owners as required by Texas Local Government Code for the proposed annexation of approximately 250.11 acres of land, which includes portions of Placido Benavides Drive and Salem Road right-of-way near the vicinity of the intersection of the proposed Placido Benavides Drive and Salem Road, and declaring an effective date.
Who would that? Not even for discussion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on E1? Any questions?
Why? I guess why?
Well, when we put the road through with the anticipated development that might come through, and then also part of that road that we're putting through is not currently in the city limits anyway. So for those tracts of land that are currently ag-exempt or wildlife exempt, they can, we can do the development agreements with them. And so for 15 years, and if they develop during that time, it's considered voluntary annexation. At the end of the 15 years, if it's still ag-exempt or then they can, council can do another extension up to an additional 30 years so that property can remain ag-exempt for 45 years.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Hold on.
I was following, I kind of spaced after the first one, so.
Okay, so we're seeking permission to start the annexation process.
Correct.
So the, there's, I think there's four properties that currently have ag-exempt status. So what we're also seeking is permission to offer them the annexation development agreements, which keeps their, as long as they don't develop the property, it keeps it ag-exempt and outside the city limits. So first 15 years, and then at the end of the 15 years, if they're still ag-exempt, then they can seek an extension from council and extend it. It can extend for an additional 15, an additional 15, for a total of 45 years. So one of the advantages of doing annexation development agreement is it does say that piece of property remains undeveloped, but if the property behind it develops, then we can go out and annex that for development. So, you know, one of the advantages, we believe, of opening this road up is there will be some property that will develop. I know some families probably will not, but there probably will be. And part of the road currently is outside the city limits, so. So it's, we're seeking permission to start the process. Tonight, you're not voting besides giving us permission to start that. The individual annexation tracks will have to come back to council for approval. And I believe there's a timeline in there of how.
Are you able to talk with these landowners if you don't have this authorization about annexation?
If they choose not to do the agreement?
I mean, have they, they haven't gotten any type of letter yet or anything?
Yes, sir, we sent them all letters probably two or three weeks ago, Julie, to let them know that we were bringing it to council tonight for permission. So, yes, sir, they've all, that would have been eligible for the annexation, the development agreement.
Did you send it to every, I thought all council members?
I thought we did.
I think it's in the reading file.
I actually said to the chairman, to make it clear, we are not annexing.
Okay, and then why isn't, maybe they're already all part of the city limits? Are these the only four that abut Placido Benavides?
The Brayman tract is already in the city limits, if you're thinking about the Braymans.
That's, I'm sorry. This one right here?
I believe that's correct, Julie, is that, is the white box?
So the yellow line is the current city limit line. There is one tract that we will be bringing forth proposing annexation. That's the Property Commerce, which is the developers of the Home Depot property. They no longer have their ag exemption. So at the end of the day, when we, if all of these properties that we're asking to offer the development agreement to, accept the development agreement, we will only be asking to annex the Property Commerce property and the actual right-of-way of Placido Benavides.
It stays ag-exempt for 30 years?
Well, it's 15 is the initial, and then they will need to come back a year prior to the expiration of that 15 years and ask for an extension, and council has the right to grant those extensions.
And as ag-exempt, they're paying roughly $300 or 100 acres?
I'm not sure what they're paying.
I'd have to look that up. I better look that up. It's very low. So on 250 acres, it's not a lot of money. It would remain low until it was developed or sold.
The advantage to the development agreements and Julie and John are much more equipped to answer these questions is it goes back to that if they do develop, then it's considered a voluntary annexation. And we'll still go through that, but it's considered a voluntary annexation, so.
Okay.
I have a question. On the topic, it says that you, or is it proposed annexation of approximately 250.11 acres? If you take the properties that are going to be offered the annexation agreements, that takes away 186.72 acres. So the 63.39 that is left over, is that what we would annex?
That would be the Placido Benavides right-of-way and then the Property Commerce tract.
That's gonna equal the 63.39 acres. So everything else would be left in the ETJ?
But again, the reason we would like for council to give us permission to move forward is if they ever develop that property, then it becomes a voluntary annexation.
Have you gotten a response back from any of the owners, from the ones, the three that we sent the letters to?
I spoke to one of the owner's representative, their attorney called for some information, and we just discussed the annexation development agreement and the process.
Nothing unusual about doing this?
No. I'm okay with going forward to give you the authorization to initiate those proceedings only because I want to hear from the landowners, any concerns they may have. I'm concerned about how does it, how does the proposed development district, special development district, fall into this too? And we have public hearings and a ordinance that we have to vote on to annex it. Further down the line, we can have a potential of three readings. So there's plenty of times to stop it if it's not the right thing to do. Or to go ahead with it, then we can vote it on through.
Because this is the area we're talking about, setting up the design district in, right?
It is, and y'all have not finalized that. I know, had some meetings with the Brayman representatives, and I need to, we've met with them a few times. I need to get back with them to see if we answered their questions.
And when is this road completion scheduled?
Early '20.
Yeah, so I mean, we're way far ahead of the game on this.
Things take a long time.
Well, no, if you look at the annexation schedule, it would be a year before the road opened. So I'm saying we have some time to make sure we're making the right decision.
Well, if they can retain their ag exemption, the holding costs are nearly the same. And so I don't feel there should be that portion of the burden.
I know, but they also give up and they become voluntarily annexed if they, I mean, there's, there's a trade-off for them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I'd just like a chance to talk to them.
You don't have an ag exemption on your bakery? Be nice, wouldn't it?
Good thing we don't have an interstate system, or else we would have never condemned anything.
And the reason we bring this forward is because if, you know, like I said, I know some families have no intentions of selling their land. So, but if somebody does decide to sell that land, we've put in a $9 million road. The city should reap the rewards of the property tax and the sales tax and should be in the city limits because of that development.
The taxpayers will reap that reward.
Well, sure, but.
No, I just, it's just choice of words.
Sure.
And the landowner that sells the land, which is suddenly a lot more valuable, will reap a good reward too, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
But there's no change for somebody that doesn't develop their property.
Right.
If they're ag-exempt.
Right.
For 45 years.
For 45 years.
Okay. That was a mosquito, Ms. Leece?
It was.
You weren't flattering for, okay.
I missed him when he flew by me.
I got him for you.
Any further discussion? Anything? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, ayes have it.
See if she can catch it with two pencils.
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Aetna Life Insurance Company to add administrative services for various employee spending accounts related to their health care and other benefits, which will increase the total contract cost by an estimated $21,605 and declaring an effective date.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Y'all probably remember what this is about, spreading out that.
Yeah, but this money is not going to be charged to the employee. It's coming out of your fund, right?
It's coming out of the health fund, yes, ma'am. So it's a total of $1,000 that council approved us to fund for the eligible employee's HSA Health Savings Account. So in addition to the resolution, I'm just bringing back a recommendation on how we would like that funding to occur. So January 1st, we would recommend a contribution from the city to those HSA accounts of $500. And then on April 1st, it would be 250. And then on July 1st, the last installment of 250, which would then total the $1,000. That's a funding within our current fiscal year, and it's for plan year 15. So we're upfronting January 1st for the 500, excuse me, yeah, January 1st for the 500, and then two installments of the 250. That would be our recommendation.
Sounds good to me. Counsel, y'all good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, a couple of city manager reports?
Sure, Mr. Bautnack, I don't know if it was at the last council meeting, I believe it was, to ask for consideration of putting a no-left-turn sign up for the Carriage Point. And so Mr. Reese has looked at that. If council wishes, we can put the sign up.
I would still like it. There's no change to any programming required. It's a minor cost to get the bucket truck over there. We can in-house print a sign.
Yeah, we fabricate the sign and then just install it. It's not a whole lot.
I still think it's a safety issue over there, whether it's just a, you know, because of the way the traffic backs up and taking that left. Heck, if we get so many complaints about it and it doesn't work, let's take it down.
What's the restriction time? What do we?
I was leaving that up to Mr. Reese and figuring out what the school time is.
Yeah, we'd use the.
School zone.
The school zone times, same times, and I'm not sure what they are. We'll have to.
Yeah, because high schools typically don't have school zones, so.
No, there's a, I think there's a zone there, if I remember right. I think it has flashing signals, but I'll double-check that.
I just, and I know Mr. Bautnack knows this because I think Donald mentioned it to him. You know, it's, it's gonna be very hard to police that in a sense since, you know, we don't plan to put a police officer there watching people whether they turn left. So just like any other traffic rules and regulations, you know, the public, we ask the public to follow those guidelines. And so if a police officer witnesses it, then they'll take action, but otherwise than that. So, you know, I kind of look for people to start calling, asking why we don't have a police officer sitting there, so. And just so y'all know.
But on the other side too, if someone does take a left turn and gets T-boned by someone coming the other direction, we know who's at fault if it happens during the no-turn times. Pretty cut and dry.
I don't think any vehicle accidents goes through, but, yeah. So, yeah.
Violating the traffic law.
But just so, you know, just so, but, yeah, anyway.
Y'all wanna, y'all okay with that? Okay. Okay, because I had, I'll update y'all a little bit on the issue. I did have a few more meetings, talked to the superintendent over there a little bit. I'm actually, I'm going to use my words carefully, very optimistic that the school board and the school district may be able to add a second entrance, you know, in a reasonable time, maybe in the next year. I'm just, I'm going to keep pushing for that. And when I, when I talk to school board members and if you guys talk to them, encourage them, the financials, you know, I'm not even going to throw the numbers out, but they're favorable. They're less than what we thought it would cost. And so I think we'll have that. I think that'll solve things a lot. Maybe we can take the sign down if they add that. You know, that way, because, you know, restrictive, restricting people access into that neighborhood. It might inconvenience a few people, but I get why you're doing it. I don't have a problem with that. So if they are able to do that in the next year, maybe next year you can take that sign down and move on. We'll see, see how it plays out. Very good.
Thank you.
The last one is April has a report on Building Standards Commission. There was a resignation and there's an application if you wish to consider it. We'll bring it back.
Mr. Nick Kinnahosa resigned from the Building and Standards Commission back in October. We have had one application submitted from Frank Ramirez, or Frank Reyes. He wishes to be appointed to that vacancy if possible. We, of course, would accept any applications up until the time we vote. And if y'all wish, we can bring back by resolution to appoint someone at the next meeting on November 20th. If you know of anybody that would like to apply, they certainly can do that on the city's website or by turning an application into my office.
I think Frank's wonderful. He's in an awesome business, and he's in the air conditioning business.
Service, what's the name of it?
South Texas Ventilation.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I think he'd be a great addition.
Frank Reyes, not Salazar, okay? You got the wrong one.
I totally agree with you. He's a, he's a good, smart guy, so that would be great. Okay.
Bring back a resolution with his name.
Is there anything else on our agenda?
No, sir, that's it.
Thank you, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, it's where you need to go.